Hey everybody, thanks for joining us again tonight on our Revelation Bible study. We're calling it 20 for 2020. Twenty sessions or twenty looks at the book of Revelation for the year 2020 so that you'll have 2020 vision. The year 2020 is a year of clarity of vision and the roar of God's people. Time to get our voice back. We're here to take back the land that the enemy has taken from us. So we're gonna take back the book of Revelation. If the book of Revelation's ever scared you, or the devil's ever tried to convince you that hey, you'll never understand it, you're not a Bible teacher, you're not a pastor, you're not a professor, a scholar, that's a lie from the pit of hell. We're gonna break through that lie. We're gonna break into the book of Revelation and we're gonna study God's word. We're gonna be together twenty times and we'll try our best to meet at 6:30 in the evening and we're gonna get twenty different looks at the book of Revelation. So let's start tonight, let's pray. Grab your Bible, grab some paper, grab something to write on, grab a pen, pull out your notes on your phone, whatever you wanna do to take some notes. But let's dig into the word of God, let's study the word of God, let's break through and see what God says about end times. So let's pray together. Father God, we love you and God, we bless you. And God, you are the King of kings and you are the Lord of lords. You're the great I am, you're the Alpha, the Omega, the beginning, the end, the first, the last, the one who was, who is, and is to come. Father God, we bless you and we ask Holy Spirit that you would open our eyes, give us eyes to see, ears to hear, and then a mouth to speak in the mighty name of Jesus. And everybody said amen. Listen, join us on WhitestoneChurchTX.com, that's our website. We'll have all these videos posted on our website. WhitestoneChurchTX Facebook page where we're going live right now. And then WhitestoneChurchTX YouTube channel. We uploaded last night, earlier today, and we'll have each session recorded live and put on YouTube for you to be able to listen or watch if you missed this. So open your Bible, this is session two, 20 for 2020. Twenty looks at the book of Revelation for 2020 vision in the year of 2020. So Revelation, chapter two, verse one. We learned in chapter one that Revelation, the book of Revelation, is all about Jesus Christ. If you read the book of Revelation to find out who the Antichrist is or who the one world government is, you're reading it for the wrong reason. So we're gonna read it to find out Jesus. We want to see Jesus in 2020. We need to see Jesus today, amen. We need to not see more about, you know, the coronavirus. We need to see more about Jesus the Christ. So Revelation two, Jesus himself wrote these two chapters in the book of Revelation, chapters two and three. If you have a red letter Bible, the entire chapter's a red letter. John the Revelator, John who wrote the book of Revelation, took dictation from Jesus himself for these two chapters. So Jesus in chapters two and three of Revelation, he's talking to the church. And let me just preface this, you can't understand the book of Revelation if you don't grasp chapters one, two, and three. Those are the most important chapters. Chapters one tells us all about Jesus. Chapters two and three talk to us about the church. So say church. The word church, when I say church, in America, we quickly go to the building down the street. We quickly go to the building that maybe you and I go to on Sunday mornings to worship God. We quickly think of the denomination or the structure. We rarely think of the city or the region. When Jesus is talking about the church, I wanna remind us that you are the church. You're the church. Your building got shut down, amen? You can't have more than ten people in your building, that's fine, because we're the church. We're the church of God, we're the body of Christ. So when we talk about churches, I want you to think about your spirit, your heart. So Jesus talks to the seven churches in Asia. And if you'll look in your Bible, I really want you to study these, read them over and over and over and over. Jesus has similar statements to each of these seven churches. So we're gonna outline real quickly what the seven churches mean. When John wrote this book in 95 AD, the seven churches in Asia were real churches, they were real cities. So he wrote to the church of Ephesus, or the church of Smyrna, or the church of Philadelphia. That would be equivalent to writing to the church of Austin, Texas, the church of New York City, the church of LA, California. He was talking to a city or a region of believers, not a building. He's talking to individuals like you and I. So when he's talking to these churches, he starts off with very descriptive languages. The first one is, he tells them a self-descriptive of himself. So long before the day of YouTube and Facebook and video cameras and cell phones, back in the seventies or early eighties, if you were gonna meet somebody for the first time, say in an airport, they were getting off the plane and you were gonna meet them, they would self-describe, they would say, hey, listen, I'm a white Caucasian male, about six foot tall. Then you would give self-descriptives about yourself and somebody may be holding up a sign that has your name on it. And so when Jesus self-describes, he's telling us what he looks like. He's telling us about his power, about his authority. So in each of these seven churches in chapters two and three, Jesus starts with a self-descriptive. Then he goes into a praise. He goes into something that that church is doing well. Then he goes into something that we're gonna call the nevertheless, or the correction, or the repent. Then he goes into the encouragement or the challenge, and then he goes into the promise. And so on your piece of paper that you started last night, you should have stars that represent angels, fallen and holy. You should have lampstands that represent churches. So stars in the book of Revelation are not just the things that twinkle in the sky, but it's talking about angels and it's talking about sometimes holy angels. And then other places that's talking about unholy are fallen angels. The lampstands represent the church. So the lampstand represents, yes, the city or the region and the building, but it's talking specifically about you, the church, me, the church, us being the church. So when Jesus talks to these seven churches, don't read these two chapters going, oh, Jesus is talking about those Christians over there. No, he's talking about you, he's talking about me. He wants us to look introspectively into our heart and see if our heart looks like one of these seven churches. So this is more than just a dialogue about some group of believers that's messing up somewhere. This is about our heart. So the first church that Jesus talks to is the church of Ephesus. So tonight, we're gonna cover the first three churches in chapter two. Excuse me, we're gonna look at the church of Ephesus, the church of Smyrna, and the church of Pergamus. So in the first statement, Jesus starts with this self-descriptive and he says, "It is I who holds the seven stars in his right hand." So it says this, let me start over, verse one, chapter two. "To the angel of the church of Ephesus write, these things says he, Jesus, who holds the seven stars in his right hand, who walks in the midst of the seven gold lampstands." Listen, Jesus walks in your midst. He walks in the midst of your church on Sunday morning. He walks in the midst of the city wide church. He's in the midst of the worldwide church. Jesus is with us and he holds the stars in his hand. He holds your pastor in his hands. He holds the angel that guards your church in his hands. He's in control of you, he holds you in his hand. Can I get amen? The second part is he starts a praise. So he's talking to the church of Ephesus in verse two, he says, "I know your works." Did you hear that? Jesus says, "I know your works." Oh, well, pastor, we're not saved by works, we're saved by grace. Yeah, you're saved by grace, Ephesians, chapter two. "You're saved by grace, not of works, lest any man should boast," but you're saved to do good works. So write that down, I'm saved to do work for God. I'm saved, I've got a job. Listen, the first thing Jesus says to you and I is, "I know your works. I know what you do for me. I know your patience, I know your love, I know your labor. I know that you can't stand evil. I know that you've tested the word of God, you've tested what people say. You don't just trust anybody that opens up the scripture. You take what they say and you line it up." So he starts to this church of Ephesus and he says, hey, listen, I know your works. So I wanna remind you of something that we'll come to later in Revelation. Christian believers will be judged for their works. What? Yeah, not just the bad people, not just those horrible sinners out there. They're not going to judgment. You and I are gonna be judged not for salvation, not for entrance into eternity, but will be judged for the talents. Jesus gave us this great parable to some of us, he's given one talent, some he's given two, some he's given five. God's gonna hold you accountable. Do you have a voice that can sing? Are you singing for God? Are you singing for the devil? Are you singing for your own pride? Are you singing to praise him? You're gonna be held accountable. How did you use the talent of your voice? Are you an accountant? Are you managing the books for God's glory? Or are you cooking the books for man's greed and deception? You know, how are you using your gift? God's gonna judge us for our works. We're gonna come to that, but we gotta know that upfront that these churches are getting a report card and God starts off, Jesus starts off in verse two, "I know your works. I know your labor, I know your patience. I know that you can't bear evil. I know that you've tested those who say they're apostles or pastors and they're not, and you found them out to be liars." Verse three, "I know you persevered in patience and you've labored for my name's sake and you've not become weary." See, God knows that you love him and he knows that you're working for him. But just like the husband who marries his bride, in the beginning, he writes her letters, he tells her story, my wife's shaking her head right now. Y'all can't see her, she's running the camera, but he writes her letters, they take long walks. And after some time, he just brings home money, he just works hard, he mows the grass, but somewhere he lost his love. So this church of Ephesus has lost their love for Jesus Christ. So say love and ask yourself, have I lost my love for Jesus? Am I working for God? Am I doing my quiet time? Am I reading my little precious moment, daily devotional? Am I reading my Jesus calling? Am I doing the work? Or am I actually spending time in love with Jesus? He says this, he goes, "Listen, I know that you love me, but nevertheless, I have this against you." Now when Jesus says nevertheless, Cameron, I have this against you, he's not talking to sinners. He's talking to Christians, he's talking to people who love him. Man, I don't want Jesus to say, Cameron, man, I know you're preaching on YouTube and you're really trying to spread the message and I know you're doing all this work for me, but man, you lost your love for me. I got something against you, man, I don't want that. You don't want that either. But in this case, Jesus is warning us, he goes, "Nevertheless, I have this against you that you left your first love." Now listen, we're gonna see this word nevertheless five out of the seven churches. Five out of the seven churches, Jesus has a rebuke, he has a correction. Now before we go, man, Jesus is picking on us, man, man, Jesus is, man, I'm doing all this good stuff, but all he notices is the bad stuff? No, that's not true at all. Here's the deal, let's say you and I wanted to get in the car and we wanted to drive to Farmington, Indiana. Now I don't know about you, but I don't know where Farmington, Indiana is. I just know that it's a city up there somewhere in Indiana. I've never been to that state or that city. Now you may be able to get there by memory, but I think most of us would need to look at a map. We would GPS it or we'd look at an old school map. Now let's just pretend that we decided that we weren't gonna look at a map or we weren't gonna GPS, we were just gonna start to drive there ourselves. But instead of heading towards Indiana, we start heading towards Utah. Well, if somebody loved us, they would correct us and say, I thought you were going to Farmington, Indiana. Well, I am. Well, listen, nevertheless, if you don't change your direction, you're gonna miss your target. I wanna say something pretty shocking here. Jesus is telling you, man, if you don't make some correction, you'll miss your destination. What? Yeah, you're gonna miss the destination. You're gonna miss the reward, you're gonna miss the journey, you're gonna miss where you're headed. If as a Christian, your destination is unity with Jesus Christ, if we don't pay heed to what's the word of God saying, then we'll miss the destination. Nevertheless, I have this against you. Listen to what he has against me, what he has against you. He's not just talking to some church over there, he's talking to you and I. Remember therefore, Cameron, where you have fallen. Cameron, remember when you were running the streets, remember when you were a punk? Remember how greedy and selfish and arrogant and prideful and conceited and full of sin you were? Don't you remember how you used to dress, how you used to talk, how you used to act? Remember where you came from, boy. Remember where you came from, girl. Remember where you have fallen, repent. We're gonna see that word repent. It's the R-word. We know about the F-word and we know about the B-word. We know about all these words in our culture. But there's a word that's so taboo, it's called repent. God needs us to repent. Repent means to be on our face before God in utter repentance and sorrow for the way we've been living our lives. Therefore, remember where you're falling, repent and do the first works. Or else I'll come to you quickly and remove your lampstand from its place. Listen, that lampstand is so important. Listen, Cameron, if you don't change what you're doing and fall back in love with me, I don't really care how much money you put in the offering plate, Cameron. Cameron, I don't really care that you're at church five nights a week and I don't really care that you take four mission trips a year. I don't really care that you read eighteen devotionals a day. I don't care if all your music is Spirit 1059 and you just listen to it. Listen, I want you to be in love with me. If you love me like a husband loves his wife, the wife may say, honey, I don't care if we live in a shack or a mansion, as long as we got love. I don't care if I drive a Lexus or a cheap car, as long as we got love. I don't care if you, you know, real love doesn't care what you do, it cares that you're with that person. That's what Jesus is saying. And he's saying this, if you don't get back right with me, I'll remove your lampstand. Whoa, what does that mean? That means if you're not gonna change, if you're not gonna shine, God will change the light bulb. Yeah, he'll take you out, set you over here and say, if you're not gonna shine for me, I'm sure not gonna leave you in a position of power and influence. I'll screw in somebody that will shine for me. See, there's a lot of passions that go, man, I don't know why my church ain't growing, I don't know. Listen, because we quit shining for him. So therefore, Jesus says, that's fine, I'll just remove your lamp. If you're not gonna light the world, if you're not gonna light the way, then what good are you? See, there's a passage of scripture that says, "God's word is a light unto our feet and a lamp unto our path." See, a light unto our feet and a lamp unto our path means that we are the light of God. Everybody wave to my wife Stacy. So, oh, I think she's running upstairs, she's distracting me. Yes, she's blowing me kisses, no, I'm just joking. But the light of God, the lamp of God's word means that if we're not gonna be the light for Jesus Christ, then he'll remove us. So don't get removed. Listen, let's keep reading, verse six. "But this, Cameron, I have against you that you hate, but this you have that you hate the deeds of the Nicolaitans, which I also hate. He who has an ear, let him hear." So I wanna ask you a question, do you have an ear? Oh, yeah, I think most people do. If you have an ear, are you hearing what the spirit of God is saying? This is how Jesus ends most of these. He starts them with the self-description, he starts it with the praise. He says, nevertheless, let's make this little correction so that we meet our destination. Then he says, hey, listen, if you have an ear, listen to what I'm saying. But then he talks about the rewards. So I want you to write down the reward. There's eleven rewards in these seven churches and I want you to get every one of them. Let me say it again, there's eleven rewards to the overcomer. Now listen, if you're not gonna go through tribulation, why would God encourage us to overcome? If it's just about Jesus taking you to heaven and you're gonna escape all of these tribulations, if that's all that it's about, then what is there to overcome? Listen, you've gotta overcome losing your first love today. Not down the road when the Antichrist comes, it's too late to look for Jesus down there. See, I talk to people about heaven all the time and I say this, man, if you don't wanna pray today, why would you wanna pray when you're in heaven? If you're embarrassed to raise your hands and worship Jesus today, why would you raise your hands and worship him in heaven? If you don't wanna spend time with Jesus today, if you'd rather watch TV than spend time with Jesus today, why would you want to spend time with him in heaven? Nothing's gonna change, because it's all about your heart. Can I get amen? Listen to what it says, you gotta read this for yourself. It blows me away when I read the word of God, verse seven. "He who has an ear, let him hear what the spirit says to the churches. And to him who overcomes..." It doesn't say to everybody. It says to him who overcomes. Overcomes what? Not losing your first love, falling back in love with, overcome the challenge to just do work for God and fall back in love with God. "To him who overcomes that challenge, I'll give the right to eat from the tree of life." That's all the way back in Genesis one, the tree of life, Adam and Eve, they're kicked out of the garden. Why? Because God's mad at them. No, he's not mad at them. Why did he kick them out of the garden? Well, I don't know, they just punished him. No, he's kicking them out of the garden because they were then sinful after they ate the fruit. And if they reached out and kept eating from the tree of life, they would've lived forever in sin. The worst thing that could've happened for Adam and Eve is to live forever sinful. The best thing that can happen for you and I is we die. Yes, that's the best thing. Why? Because if Jesus is reborn and made us a new person on the inside, this old man, he's gonna die one day. And I'll be raised to life with Christ and the first reward I'll get is to eat from the very tree that Adam and Eve was removed from. See, it broke God's heart when he had to remove Adam and Eve. It broke his heart because he wanted intimacy with this boy and girl. He wanted intimacy with his son and daughter. So he just says, "I'll let you eat from the tree, which is in the midst of the paradise," to God. God wants you to eat from the tree that's in the tree, in the garden. Verse, the second church, the church of Smyrna. Now this is a unique church. There's only two of the seven churches that God doesn't have a nevertheless for. This is a church that's got their act together. This is a part of your heart that God may not have to bring correction to. The church of Ephesus, I want you to divide your heart into seven pieces. And I wanna ask, is there a part of your heart where you lost your first love for God? Maybe not all of it, but is there a part? There's another part that this is the persecuted church. Now I wanna remind you the persecuted church, let's just read it. Again, Jesus says, "To the angel of the church of Smyrna, write, the things who says the first and last, and he who is dead and came back to life." Again, Jesus Christ is self-describing. Then he praises the church of Smyrna. He says this, "I know your works, your tribulation and your poverty, but you're rich." Hey, listen, I know your works and I know the tribulation you're going through. I know the, listen, if you and I had lived in Syria today, we'd be under great tribulation. We would be under great physical attack. If we lived in communist China and were part of the underground church in China, we'd be losing our heads, we'd have loved ones locked up, not because they were criminals, but because they were lovers of Jesus Christ and possessed a Bible. See, there's persecution today. Just because it's not happening to you in Austin, Texas, doesn't mean it's not happening. Some of us are not going through persecution because we don't take a stand for anything. So nobody knows who we are anyways, so how could they persecute us? They don't know what we stand for. Jesus is saying to this church, the first and last, "I know your works, your tribulation and your poverty, but you're rich. And I know the blasphemy of those who are Jews that, who say they are Jews and they are not, but they are actually in the synagogue of Satan." It's pretty scary. Verse 10, listen, "Cameron, do not fear any of those things which you are about to suffer." What? Oh, God doesn't want us to suffer. Who said that? The social gospel of 2020 in Austin, Texas? God just wants you to be happy? That's not gospel. There's a part of us that has to suffer, that's why we don't wanna fast. That's why we don't wanna give our ties to the church. That's why we don't wanna get up out of bed, because it's better, more comfortable. We don't wanna suffer on our day off. No, there's a part of us that's gonna suffer, so we gotta get past this mindset that God's just gonna take us out of all this tribulation. God doesn't want us to suffer. No, 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 God's not worried about your happiness, he's worried about your holiness. Get that through into our minds. Do not fear. Some of you are about to suffer some things. Indeed, the devil is about to throw some of you into prison that you may be tested and you will have tribulation for ten days. Be faithful unto death and I'll give you the crown of life. You gotta read this verse for yourself. I get so excited about it, I have to tell this story attached to it. But in verse 10, it says, "Chase the crown of life, be faithful unto death." There is what's called the martyr's crown. And one day, I'll be walking the golden streets of heaven with my bride and we'll be, we'll say, we'll be on this side of the street and we'll be on the right side of the street. We'll be walking down the sidewalk, hand in hand, talking about things. And I promise you, I'll look across the other side of the street and I'll see two beautiful teenage girls. And they're gonna have these beautiful crowns on that not everybody's gonna have, because not everybody pays the same price and not everybody's called to the right to the same work. And I'm gonna go, Stacy, we gotta go meet those girls. And we're gonna run across the street and I'm gonna stop two teenage girls. I'm gonna say, hey, are you Cassie and are you Rachel? Man, I know you, tell me your story. And Cassie and Rachel will have beautiful crowns of life. They're called the martyr's crown. Because Cassie and Rachel were at Columbine High School on a normal April 20th, 1999 school day when two boys walked up and put a gun in their face and said, do you love God? If you say yes, I'm gonna pull the trigger. If you say no, I'll let you live. And with the gun to her face, Cassie and Rachel says, I love God. And the two boys pulled the trigger. And for that, because they didn't love their own lives, that they paid the ultimate price. They were faithful unto death, they got the crown of life. That's a reward. I don't, I'm not saying I wanna die here on the earth, but man, I wanna chase and encourage people that that may be their calling. I want you to get the crown of life, I really do. Keep going, verse 11, "He who has an ear..." Cameron, if you got ears, listen to what the spirit of God's saying. "To he who overcomes..." Say overcomes, I want you to be an overcomer. "To he who overcomes, you shall not be hurt by the second death." Listen, you're gonna die in the physical ones, but there's a second death for those that don't know Jesus. And that second death, there's no resurrection, that's punishment in hell forever. He's talking to the church. If that wasn't an option for the church, why would he be talking to the church about it? You gotta get outside of your bumper sticker, Christianity and religion and theology and dig deep into the word of God, because if you dig deep into the word of God, it'll scare you. And if it doesn't scare you, it's because you're saying, oh, it's not, it doesn't mean what it really says. No, 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 it means what it says. It means what it says. Last church, "To the angel of the church of Pergamus, write, these things says he who has the sharp, two-edged sword." I love that description of Jesus. He is not a baby in a manger, he's coming back as a warrior. And out of his mouth, he will destroy the enemy. He'll destroy suicide with the two-edged sword. He'll destroy depression, he'll destroy hopelessness and loneliness. If you're struggling with despair and heaviness, you gotta get the word of God into you, because the word of God is a sharp, two-edged sword that'll slice through depression and slice through unforgiveness of your childhood abuser, slice through your fear and failure because you lost your job and at the same time will bring forgiveness, at the same time will bring hope, at the same time will bring joy. He who has the sharp, double-edged sword coming out of his mouth says these things. "I know your works." Again, God, he knows your works, man, you're gonna be judged for your works. Oh, man, it's gonna be bad. I don't know if I'm ready for that. "I know your works." And where you dwell, you live where Satan's throne is. You're in the middle of the fire, man, you live in Sin City. Woo, you live on that side of town. Oh my God, you live in that family. I know where you live, you live where Satan's throne is, but you hold fast to my name. You hold on to my name, Jesus the Christ. You don't compromise. You're not tossed to and fro by every David Koresh that comes up and says, I am God. No, 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 there's one God and his name is Jesus Christ. Anybody else that claims to be God is a liar. Anybody else that claims to be God is misinformed. Jesus Christ is God in the flesh. "And you did not deny my faith, even in the days in which Antipas was one of my faithful martyrs who was killed among you where Satan dwells." Listen, you haven't backed down, even when other people have died and you could've been one of them. You are strong in the Lord. Look at this, verse 14. "But nevertheless, I have a few things against you." Remember, we're going to Farmington, Indiana, and you're headed to Utah. Let's make some corrections. I want you... I want you, it would be like counseling for a marriage. Hey, listen, man, y'all have been married for ten years. You got a great marriage, but, but man, there's some things we need to tweak and we need to work through because if you don't change these and forgive these, your spouse, you don't make some change and corrections, you could be headed for divorce court in another ten years. Let's just make some corrections. That's all Jesus is saying. He says, "Nevertheless, I have this against you, Cameron, because there's those of you that hold to the doctrine of Balaam." Now, listen, we don't have time in this video to go into the depth of who Balaam was and who Balak was, but listen to what this says because I'm gonna break it down and make it easy. "I have this against you that you hold, that you hold fast to the doctrine of Balaam, who taught Balak to put a stumbling block before the children of God." Now, listen, it gets deep. "He caused them to eat food sacrificed to idols." I want you to write that down. Eat food sacrificed to idols and to commit sexual immorality. Now, listen, when it says that Balaam taught the children of Israel to eat food sacrificed to idols, that's not going to, uh, that restaurant that's got that little statue. It's got some food in front of it. No, no, that's not what we're talking about. God wasn't warning us about future restaurant food. No, no. Food is, is the word of God. Jesus says, "Man does not live by bread alone, but by every word that proceedeth out of the mouth of God." This is God's food for you. The devil also has food. The devil has a demonic theology and it's creeping into the church. See, to this church, to these believers in Pergamum, in Pergamus, God's saying, "Listen, don't listen to the false doctrine of the devil." Now, he's not talking about differences between churches on how to baptize or take communion or silly stuff like that. He's talking about, don't let the theology of demons fall into the pages of your gospel. See, one of the biggest lies that, that we want to, you know, just say, "Well, we're being very intellectual in the church. We, we can't really believe that God made the world in six literal days." That, that's just ludicrous. No, no, that's not ludicrous. That's truth. And it's the word of God. So I can't, I can't believe Jesus died for me, but not believe that he created the world. See, if I, if I, if I'm letting the, the doctrine of demons inter, intersect, I'll start to question everything in the Bible. Oh, well, God didn't really mean that I can't have sex with my girlfriend. I really love her. Man, we're in love. God wants me to be happy. No, no, he wants, he wants you to be holy. So, so sex outside of marriage is not, is not appropriate. See, what's happening in the church is we're buying theology. Oh, I'm just practicing a little bit of, of yoga over here. No, no, that's Hinduism. Call it what it is. Oh, hey, I might have just lost half my views right there. But it's doctrine of demons creeping into the church. We gotta be careful, guys. We can't let the doctrine of demons enter into the gospel of Jesus Christ. Sexual immorality. Listen, you may be saying, "Hey, I'm faithful. I'm, I'm not cheating on my spouse." But what are we watching on TV? Are we watching other people's bodies on TV? That's adultery. That's sexual immorality. We gotta be careful. What jokes are we laughing to? What stories are we telling? What are we finding entertaining? Is it creeping into our so-called religion? We gotta fight against this. This I also have against you. Verse fifteen. "This I also have against you that you tolerate the doctrine of the Nicolaitans." Listen, the doctrine of the Nicolaitans just simply meant you don't need somebody else to confess your sins to. You can go to Jesus Christ yourself. You don't need to call me up and say, "Hey, would you ask God to forgive me?" No, I won't. You gotta ask him yourself. Listen, if, if you need to, if you believe you got, there's a hierarchy in Christianity. There's no hierarchy.